Okay, good morning. It is Thursday, October 5th. Pretty amazing how the months just keep flying by. But it's October 5th and as always, why don't we take a moment, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start with some priority. Carol, and let's start from my left. Commissioner Vigliotti, what's on your mind?
Well, first of all, Commissioner Rossing, it's very nice to have you back and I'm glad that you're with us in person.
Me too, thanks.
So, over the weekend, I had a phenomenal time at Tawny Town's Harvest Festival on Saturday. It's always awesome to see people I know, to make new friends, and among those who were set up at Harvest Fest on Saturday was the Water Resource Team from Carroll County, which includes Bureau Chief Janet O'Meara and Claire Hurt. And I always like to highlight and give credit where it's due. We have so many employees who get out into the community and who do so many awesome things, educating people and helping to inform our citizens. And, you know, when they do something like this, they certainly deserve the credit for doing so. So, in this circumstance, it's educating members of the public about the importance of protecting our waterways and our water features, and how it's important because it affects everything from the water we drink to the water that sustains farmland to the water that ultimately ends up in the Chesapeake Bay. And so Janet and Claire deserve a tremendous amount of credit for dealing with a ton of yellow jackets and dealing with the impressive heat that day. And the presentation that they have set up certainly attracted quite a number of citizens. Elsewhere in District 1 coming up, on October 6th, the Union Bridge Lions Club will be holding their Polish Pottery Bingo at the New Windsor Fire Hall. New Windsor's annual music on the main event will return this Saturday, October 7th, from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. There are going to be all kinds of activities and fun things to do, including face painting for kids and a bounce house. There are also going to be all kinds of craft and food vendors as well as that. Lastly, Tawny Town's Flea Market will be held on Saturday, October 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Memorial Park. And just one last quick note, we've been receiving a lot of emails lately, more so than normal, in particular about definitions and other current events that we're discussing as a board. And so if I haven't responded to you yet, or I am late in doing so, please do forgive me for that, because again, we are receiving far more emails than we typically do at present. And Commissioner, that's all for me this morning. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks, Joe. Commissioner Kyler?
Thank you. And I'll piggyback before I forget on the emails. We've gotten a lot of them, but I'll be straight with the people sending them. The ones that are photocopies of somebody else's without any of your original thoughts, I probably will not answer. But the ones that really sent us and talked to us, I will make every attempt to answer. And I do want to hear from everybody. I try to say that whenever I can.
Oh, certainly happy to hear from everybody, yes.
Carroll County Public Schools, I saw some stuff on social media, and I think everybody's aware of it. I know we've talked about it here before. There's a state curriculum for health, which you have to opt out of if you don't want to do it. My humble opinion is you should opt out of it and do the Carroll County-designed health curriculum. But evidently, a lot of people have opted out, but there was some miswording in it. And you should have gotten emails saying you need to do it again. So, I've got a statement from them that says, "The link to the Maryland Health Framework that is a choice for families did not contain all the indicators that will be taught. We didn't want families choosing that framework because they were uninformed." So, it's got some more information, but my understanding is even if you opted out the first time, you need to do it again to make it that your student will take the county one. On much lighter notes, as everybody's probably aware, there's an Oriole game Saturday at 1:00 p.m. The division series, Game 1, home for the Orioles. And I just think that's super. It's been, wow. They've been in playoffs, but it's probably many, many, many years since they've been division champs.
Since 1979, they went over 100 games, I think.
Yes, yes, and have over 100 wins. So, I just think that's awesome.
100 wins, I apologize.
And we went on September 30th with my son, granddaughter, grandson, and daughter-in-law. And they had already clinched, but they did win that day, and just Camden Yards is awesome. And Saturday, I'm gonna take the third one back in the picture. We only have two tickets, so I'm taking my grandson, and we'll have a blast, and hopefully they win again. Carroll County Republican Club did a law enforcement night. Chief Ledwell, Sheriff Dewey, State's Attorney Shoemaker, Senator, and some delegates attended that. It was a nice crowd, and it's great to hear them speak about law enforcement in Carroll County. We are so fortunate here to have such a safe county. And a lot of it is the families and the people that live in Carroll County, but we have good law enforcement backing us up. Went to the Carroll County Realtors' installation of officers last week and did a photo with the outgoing president and Brian Lipskin. He was most of the ceremony because the last thing they do is install the new president, Terry Bass. But just a great, great event. We do need to work hard to get more inventory of houses and property in Carroll County. And this is a great group of people, and it's interesting, and I'm not gonna name a bunch of names. I'd like to, but I'll skip some that are important. A lot of these people are also volunteers in the community, active in the community in other ways. They've just opened a new office. It's a great group, and I was very happy to be part of their installation of new officers. Senator Reedy had an outing at Island Green, and that was great. It was great to see a lot of people and hear him talk about Annapolis and what he does and what the delegates do down there. Again, back to, I love Carroll County. I think right now, I mentioned the school system, I mentioned Realtors, I've mentioned Republican Club, I mentioned delegates and Senator. Everybody seems to work together here. It's not a whole lot of bickering. We don't always agree, but we all work together, and I just think that makes Carroll County even greater. Went to Dill Dinkers Pickleball. Will and Denise Richards created that entity, probably first in, maybe in Montgomery County, maybe in Columbia. They now franchise, and they've grown. Their daughter runs a lot of the stuff, and she was there. Their younger daughter actually came up with the name, and I just think it's an awesome name. And it's a great facility, and that shows you a court. We cut the ribbon. Commissioner Gordon and I each bored them with a few comments. That's the lady that, she's the owner. And once we got done boring them, we did the ribbon cutting, and then every court was full with people waiting at each court to get on. It's a great way to recreate. And one of the things, and I talked about it with a couple of the people there running it, that it reminds me of back with the rec councils and some of the volleyball groups. Tennis seemed a little bit more individual, but this volleyball, it's like a social network. It's the lobbies as full as the courts sometimes. So, if you want to get out and meet some other people that have similar interests, it's a great place to go to do it. Tonight is the Carroll Trust Annual Dinner, and that'll be great, and it'll be great to see all the Ag people in the community that do so much in our community. And I think that covers it for today. I love Carroll County, and I'm blessed to work with four other great guys, and hopefully we get something done today, right?
So, who won red or blue pickleball? I know you would have competed against Commissioner Gordon, I mean...
No, the chamber wanted us to do like a match until death or something. I don't know if pickleball you can really...
Two go in, one go out.
Exactly. We opted out of that option.
It surprised me, and they had some pros on TV. It's a lot more finesse than it is banging it. Now, my son had a great idea, and neither one of us will probably do it, but if you're listening out there, or some of the creative people out here at the table, the pickleball is like a wiffle ball, little harder, not quite as many holes in it. And when you hit it, it's loud as shit. I mean, at the point...
But we don't say those words.
Oh, okay. It's loud. I'm sorry. It's very loud. And my son said, "People object at recreation places where there's pickleball going on because the ball sounds so loud. Why can't someone invent a silent pickleball?"
Oh, I'm on that.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm on that right now.
Whoever does that will be pretty wealthy. And thank you for setting me up.
I'm about to use the gavel on you. So, yeah, we're rich.
Commissioner, you have to wield that with finesse.
See what happens when I get off script? He did not write that comment for me. I apologize.
Wow.
...in this late session, and this is what you allowed to happen?
This is what happens. Yes, so definitely with the Orioles, best of luck to them. It's pretty impressive, they had to change their schedule around to start time at 1:00 p.m. because Billy Joel and Stevie Nicks will be in concert that evening. And actually, I'll be going to that concert at 7:00, and they had to figure out the whole parking ordeal because you have 40-plus thousand at each venue, you know? And they never thought they would have had to do this. Not to say they had no doubt that the Orioles were gonna be playing the first game and getting the, you know, AL series.
And to their credit, Major League Baseball was flexible with it.
Absolutely.
Because this wasn't the times they wanted, nor Fox wanted the game to be.
Right. So, pretty impressive.
Well, to quote Commissioner Kaiser, "That concert's gonna be loud as...
Commissioner Kaiser? Commissioner Kaiser?
Now the king.
Are we having bloopers this morning or what?
He's got the mustache for it.
Okay. We are digressing here. President, get us back in order.
Thank you. I think I'll take us back to where we need to be. So, this Saturday, October 7th, the Westminster Fire Department will celebrate their 200th anniversary with a parade and fire muster. The parade will occur through downtown Westminster. Antique Fire Muster will be held at the fire station following the parade, and the parade begins at 10:00 o'clock in the morning. Commissioner Vigliotti and myself will be in attendance at that, and we look forward to seeing everyone out and attending this historic and very monumental moment for Westminster Fire Department. Anyone that subscribes to the county newsletter would have seen the other day, and I just want to mention this for anyone that's not, October 21st, there will be a disposal of household hazardous waste shred documents events that's slated for the 21st. There's a wide array of lists of what is allowed and not allowed for household hazardous waste items. Great opportunity to get rid of some of those items that may be in your basement, your garage, and great opportunity to do it in the right fashion and also not affect the environment doing so. As Commissioner Kyler mentioned, he and I did attend the opening of Dill Dinkers the other day. Wonderful event, very, very packed with the public ready to play.
And that is the daughter that runs the place. And yes, yes.
And just, you know, great to see such an exceptional turnout. As Commissioner Kyler mentioned, they are branching out, and I do believe they're looking at going national, from what I've understood. As always, great to see another business in Carroll County. And if anyone is looking for recreational opportunities with this sport, it's everything from very social to very competitive, depending on who you get involved with, group-wise, to play. Also, interestingly enough, someone did mention the other day, and four out of five of us, not to throw Commissioner Vigliotti under the bus, won't be able to do this, but Commissioner Vigliotti, they also do have a singles pickleball league, so there might be, you know, some scenarios for anyone that's looking to attend or participate in that.
How many women play the game, do you know?
A lot.
A lot?
A lot.
All right, all right. See, it's not just you who derails the conversation.
Okay, this is not matchmaking time. Keep going.
Also...
I think one operation, and you've totally lost control.
Keep going.
Also, wanted to mention and bring this to everyone's attention. I had received a couple emails this morning and a couple phone calls last night about this. And usually, you hear that and you go, "It's a bad thing." This is a great thing. Want to give my heartfelt thanks to Chris Swam and staff and everyone involved in lighting our building up for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. The building last night was pink. I know that's very appreciated by many people in the community, that we are not only aware, but also pointing that out to the public. It is definitely a situation that affects a significant number of individuals in our county. Had recently reached out to the Health Department, and they had said that there were 1,177 cases previously, according to their data, and roughly 150 new cases diagnosed as of the last date available. To anyone out there, definitely look into health procedures and screenings and such. Also, for anyone that is in a position that they cannot afford those screenings, do look into this with the Health Department. There are options. So, I just wanted to point that out and bring that awareness to that. Also, in reference to our building and the Orioles, really appreciate staff last week, last Thursday, actually, lighting it up orange. And we had 269 likes on that post. So, clearly, the community appreciates and supports that we are supporting the Orioles. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks, Tom. Commissioner Gary?
Thank you. Good morning, Carroll County. Just a couple follow-ups. I did attend the Back the Blue event on Tuesday night. It was a great event. Thanks for mentioning that. And congratulations to Mercedes Mobis, the president of the Carroll County Republican Club. I won't give the figure, but she was very successful in raising quite a bit of funds for the police there. And I appreciate Commissioner Kyler bringing up this issue of the opt-out form. As my wife and I got the email and did what we thought was gonna work for the opt-out form, so it appears that some additional steps are necessary. Parents, I will temper my frustration with that, but I will ask anybody listening from the Carroll County Public School System and the IT shop, please just, whoever needs to find that form online, please just make it as easy as possible, be prepared for a lot of traffic. So, parents, make sure you are paying attention to that link and get to it tonight. I also wanted to bring up some good news from South Carroll High School. As a lot of people know, I'm a proud alum, a proud Cav. Once a Cav, always a Cav. It's been a rough year for football, so I won't bring that up, although my good friend, Patrick Black, who's a parent coach of the JV team, he's assuring me that this is just a transition period, it's not as bad as it looks, and there's new teams, there's new coaches, there's new plays, and it's gonna get better. So, I'm gonna take your word on that, Patrick, and hope for the best. But the golf team recently won the district championship down there, and I am really proud of that group of young men, and really proud to say that I know each one of them, and I have known them since they were young. And I knew each one of their families, and they're good people, and they're involved in the area down there. Patrick Carl, goes by Patch, Michael Valerio, Chase Lowden, and Jack Lauer. Congratulations to you four. Good luck as you move on, but you've got four just, they're incredible golfers, and they have golf player names, too, which is, so you know they're gonna be, you know they're gonna be good. So, to those four young men...
He goes right with Tiger.
He does. He goes by, he goes by Patch Carl. But again, just congratulations to those four young men, and it's just fun to watch them succeed in that sport, extremely difficult sport. So, congratulations to them. And in keeping with what I typically do here on Thursday mornings, a little bit of a sobering note, and I just wanted to bring up this issue because we are starting to see several incidents and events in the county, and I think it's worth mentioning. I've spoken at length about the issue of marijuana use and cannabis in the county, in the state. But my message to parents who know, your underage parents, you know your kids drink. If you know your kids are using cannabis, they're obviously under 21. To those parents who know that and aren't pushing back on it, who aren't exposing the risks of those two things to your parents, I'm sad to say, but you're not doing it right. And you need to. Drinking's bad enough. We know that there's so much underage drinking going on that the cases of liver disease and things like that are going up, and I won't get into the statistics. But this cannabis is different. And there's a reason why you have to be 21 to get it. But unlike a beer can or whatever you find in your kid's room and you start asking questions, "Where'd you get it from?", you typically know what's in there. But I'm telling you, and I'm not trying to be hyperbolic, you don't know what's in that vape pen or in that joint or whatever your underage child is smoking. You simply do not know what's in there. There's a reason why 21 is that age, because we all know that, you know, when you're young, you make dumb decisions, the brain's not fully functioning, it's science, we all know that. But my message to those parents, and I say this because I have teenagers and I know exactly what I'm talking about, to those parents out there, you have to start paying attention. And if you're not pushing back on your children, and you're sort of looking the other way, and just hoping they don't get in the car and get themselves killed or somebody else killed, you're doing it wrong. And you are not gonna get help from anybody to have those discussions. You're not gonna get help from any other entity, whether it's a state or local level. I understand, we all hear the slogans, we all see the slogans, you know, "The children are our future, it takes a village, it takes a community, they're our greatest asset." No. They are your future, and they are your asset, and they are your responsibility. So, please, to those parents out there, and again, I bring this up because there have been a few incidents as of late, and I don't know all the details, and I'm not gonna get into them, but there's people who have come fairly close to losing their lives, young people. So, if you're watching this, think about what I'm saying. Consider having those discussions. You're not gonna always succeed. I'm not asking you to be a helicopter parent, you hover over your kids, you start going through all their stuff, you start watching everything, you start tracking them. That's not what I'm talking about. But simply put, it is your job to push back on that, to let them know that what they're doing is dangerous. And if you tell them often enough, what I've learned as a parent of three kids, if you tell them long enough, often enough, it'll get through. They actually will hear you at some point, and that's an interesting note, and I think all the other dads up here will back me up. They usually don't listen, but sometimes they do. And if you say something enough, they will hear you. And what I've noticed now that my kids have gotten older is that, wow, they actually were listening part of the time. And it only takes that one time. So, again, I just want to put that out there. It's not a discussion about the ballot or the law or the dispensaries, that's not what I'm discussing. That's for another time. Everyone already knows my views on that. But it's to the parents in these areas all over the county, start paying attention, because it is happening and it is an issue. And you've gotta pay attention because, once again, your kids, your future. No one's coming to help you, it's just you. So, take advantage of that opportunity and make sure you're having your voice heard. So, that's all for me.
No, I appreciate it. And I know with two of your colleagues, Kenny and I up here, we've had to deal with this as our children have grown. And, you know, I was gonna first start by saying, up here on the dais, we don't always take ourselves as seriously, but we do everything we do very seriously. But there are times where we need to be very serious and be very candid, sometimes not with four-letter words, but that's okay, but being just very straightforward and candid. And Mike, I appreciate that message.
Thank you.
Because I'm tired of it. I'm tired of kids that are getting, putting themselves in harm's way and, you know, making poor decisions and not being navigated by parents and others to do what's right. And this goes from drugs and alcohol to bullying to all the other garbage that's out there, you know? So, no, very, very sobering message and very appreciative, at least from me, on what you just shared. As far as football, I know South Carroll's having a tough time, but so is Century, and my son is coaching over there along with, you know, being a long-term sub or a... And my son is, uh, coaching over there along with, uh, you know, being a long-term sub or a full, whatever they call it, a full-time sub over there. And I don't know if it's transition, I'm not sure, but they're working hard. And I'll tell you, any kid and anybody who decides to put a uniform on, whatever that uniform is, and get out on the field, you know, whether it's a singlet or pads or a golf club or running shorts, they may be the best, they may be the worst, but they're willing to get out there and do, uh, the best they can. So, uh, kudos to the South Carroll football, Century football, and all the other football teams that are out there. And definitely congratulations to the golf team that you mentioned. From South Carroll, last night I attended the Hometown Hero Banners Ceremony over at, uh, Sykesville. And, um, strong appreciation and kudos goes to the Downtown Sykesville Connect Committee, run by Julie Dela Maria. And I want to say this is a long time coming because a lot of the other communities have these banners with service members, you know, on them. We do it so well in Carroll County to recognize our, our veterans. Sykesville was challenged, uh, playing by the rules, not having the opportunity to put these banners upon, uh, you know, the, the poles and things like that. Well, they finally got, uh, the go-ahead. Um, they got some funding, uh, from Post 223. The American Legion was definitely a part of it. Uh, Mayor Link, uh, Stacy was a very strong advocate along with, uh, her entire council. So I went to this, uh, event, um, early evening yesterday and, um, said a few words. But what really, you know, sparked me was just how many folks were out there. It was just so cool, you know, that folks are recognizing, you know, those that are being, um, honored, not memorialized, some maybe memorialized, but mostly honored, uh, with, with these banners. So really, uh, strong, um, kudos to, uh, to Julie, Stacy, Post 223. Our American Legions are awesome in this county. I mean, from, uh, I don't want to name all of them. I mean, just, they're just awesome. From all the way down in the town area to Hampstead to Sykesville to Westminster and, and every one of them. So, um, let's see. Next week I'll be going, uh, to Minneapolis with, uh, with Deb Effingham, our deputy administrator, which is part of the Baltimore Metropolitan Committee, Council, Council. And, uh, you know, we do this once a year with different communities across the country, looking at best practices and opportunities to share ideas, um, and what to bring back to the region. So it's not just Carroll County, but it's, um, Baltimore, Anarundel, Howard, uh, Hartford, and Carroll, you know, coming together and going forward. And, uh, we'll be out there for a couple days. Then after that, uh, the following week, um, we'll be going up to New York City. And we'll be looking forward to putting our best foot forward and continuing to highlight just how cool Carroll County is and how strong Carroll County is fiscally, uh, being responsible who we are. And, uh, coming back with a strong report is what I would expect. And, uh, I'm hoping those that may come forward will also share that same attitude. So looking forward for Commissioner Kyler and I, along with our awesome staff, going forward to, uh, to the city in a couple weeks. The last thing I want to say, uh, just on another unfortunate sobering note. Morgan State, uh, a day or so ago, there was a violent shooting where five people were shot and four of them students. And you think about this, I mean, those that are going to schools, I mean, it's, it's hard enough to get away from, you know, like Commissioner Garry and you said about the drugs and alcohol. It's, it's hard enough to do that. It's, you know, it's hard enough to just do the things you want to do. And then all of a sudden, four kids are go, no longer going to school right now because they got shot in, uh, at Morgan State. I don't know all the details, to be honest. I just got the headlines. And I don't want to get into the details. It's just, I'm getting tired of the violence, you know? But just wanting to share my thoughts for them to have strength and courage in their recoveries and moving forward. Okay, that's about all for now. Why don't we go into a, uh, I believe a proclamation, Commissioner Garry, you may have.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, we've got some, we've got three VIPs here this morning. If you want to come up and have a seat with us, it is, uh, Chief Michael Robinson, who is the Director and Chief of our Carroll County Department of Fire and EMS. President Susan Mott, she is the President of a CCV, so that is the organization that represents the many, many volunteers. And we've got Lieutenant Mike Karolenko, who is the President of the International Association of Firefighters Local 5184. So welcome to all three of you. Who's fighting fi, who's fighting fires if you guys are all here? Okay, so I've got a proclamation. As Commissioner Rothstein mentioned, it is Fire Prevention Week. And I have noticed around the county, the banners and things up at the, uh, at our stations everywhere. So I just think that's wonderful. And I can, I can see mine. I can, you can see them right from the road. So whoever's putting these up, they're doing a great job. Please pass that along, President Mott. So again, Fire Prevention Week is October 8th to October 14th. Carroll County is committed to preserving the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our county. And fire is, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. At homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Between 2016 and 2020, home fires caused, caused on average 2,610 civilian deaths in the United States. According to the National Fire Protection Association and Fire Departments of the United States, responded to on average 343,100 home fires in that same period. According to the NFPA, cooking is the leading cause of home fires. With nearly half of all home fires involving cooking equipment, cooking is also the leading cause of home fire injuries with unattended cooking as the leading cause of home cooking fires and related deaths. The 2023 Fire Prevention Week campaign, Cooking Safety Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention. Promote safety tips, guidelines, and recommendations that can help significantly reduce the risk of having a cooking fire. Including always keep a close eye on what you're cooking. For foods with longer cooking times, such as those that are simmering or baking, set a timer. Clear the cooking area of combustible items and keep anything that can burn, such as dish towels, oven mitts, away from those areas. Turn pot holder, pot handles toward the back of the stove. We were taught that as a kid. Keep a lid nearby when cooking. If a small grease fire, slide the lid over the pan and turn off the burner. And create a kid and pet free zone of at least three feet around the cooking area. And anywhere else hot food or drink is prepared and carried. This campaign is, is a message to educate the public on how to reduce the leading cause of home fires in Carroll County. Carroll County first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Carroll County residents that are responsive to public education matters are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Now therefore, we, the Board of Carroll County Commissioners, do by proclaim October 8th to 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week. And again, thank all three of you for being here. Chief Robinson, you have a few comments about this? I'm sure you do.
Yes, and of course I do. Should have done this last week when I lost my voice. So, um, this is the 101st commemoration of Fire Prevention Week. And Fire Prevention Week has its origins in the Great Chicago Fire of 1871, which took 250 lives. So, uh, this is actually the 101st, not anniversary of the fire, but of Fire Prevention Week, which always occurs during the week, which includes October 9th, which historically is the day of the Great Chicago Fire. The cooking theme is very appropriate because again, it is the number one cause of our fires. Uh, one of the biggest issues with cooking fires is typically, uh, human behavior will take over. You see a cooking fire, people tend to try to extinguish that fire. Usually they'll take water. Most of these fires are grease. And all that does is spread the fire and cause injuries. So we want to emphasize, uh, that people evacuate their residents should they come across a cooking fire. Turn off the burner, whether it's gas or electric, electric. And it's always good if you're doing any kind of frying to keep, uh, the large lids for your pots or your frying pans. And covering that will take away the oxygen and will actually put out the fire. Uh, fire extinguishers, water, all those kinds of things typically, uh, accelerate those fires. During this week, uh, we will have our stations out, visiting all the elementary schools. Some volunteer stations will be having open houses. And again, I'd like to reiterate, as Commissioner Gordon spoke about, is there'll be a very large event at Westminster to celebrate their, uh, 200th anniversary. And there will be displays there, uh, on fire prevention. So it's actually now, we've extended Fire Prevention Week. It's really now Fire Prevention Month and fire prevention should be a year-round occurrence. Through the efforts in the last 50 years with fire prevention, we've actually reduced by 50% the number of fire fatalities. If we go back to the 70s, we were losing, uh, over 5,000 people a year. Now that number is, uh, down to about 2,500. So the efforts are working. Uh, you don't need firefighters to tell you how to handle these things. Um, everybody needs to just have situational awareness and act accordingly. If you go to our homepage on the Carroll County site, we will have a number of links and, uh, materials, uh, to focus on that awareness. So we thank the Board for recognizing this week.
Lieutenant?
Well, just, uh, we look forward to, uh, you know, for the first time being our Department of Fire and EMS employees with the county, uh, getting out and building those relationships with the kids in the schools. And, uh, it's just an awesome opportunity. A lot of times, coming to the station. So it's a great partnership, uh, between the volunteer and the career aspects to be able to, uh, bring those lessons to the kids. You know, if you have any doubt of the severity or the seriousness of what we're discussing with the chief so eloquently put out, um, go to YouTube. You know, you can see how fast these things evolve. So just like we train and we take seriously creating muscle memory, uh, for stressful scenarios, we really encourage everybody to take that seriously and train and practice these drills at home. It's not a joke. It's not just silly. Uh, when something bad happens, you're going to really appreciate the fact that you practiced it first. So really, uh, appreciate you, uh, bringing attention here. And, uh, it's going to be a, a good week, a good month, and we're, uh, looking forward to it.
Appreciate it. President Mott?
Not a whole lot left to say. Taking my thunder away from everything. The volunteers typically every year, uh, celebrate this week with having kids come into the stations. We go out to the schools. So this year, as we combine with CCD Fems, we're able to put even more information out and more people available to educate, not just the children, but the adults. It's very important because as adults, we tend to get a little bit complacent until the children remind us. And we have different events that will give the children and adults the ability to prevent fires. And I thank you very much for recognizing all of this. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any, uh, comments or leave us up here?
Thank you very much for doing what you do. And I think it's important to remember too, that, that you, you don't just talk about these things, but you live them, right? And, and the key component of, of all of this is not even just the, the, the sense of what you do. It's trying to educate people about preventing these things from happening in the first place. And so I think that what the three of you and everybody are doing with this is incredibly important. Because again, you create that, that sense of, like you said, uh, uh, you know, the muscle memory, so to speak, about this, right? You, you get yourself into good habits because the education has kicked in and these become customs that you, you practice.
Top, drop, and roll.
There you go.
Every kid in the world knows that one.
Exactly. And, uh, so I can't thank the three of you enough for what you do, not just on a day in and day out basis, but for taking the time and the effort to educate all of us about safe practices. So God bless the three of you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
It's just, thank you very much and, and thank you to everyone throughout the county. We got a lot of volunteers, a lot of paid people that, that spend a lot of time protecting us. Thank you.
Yeah, I just think that, uh, you know, all those in red, blue, and green, you know, you wear the uniform certain parts of the day, but your attitudes and professionalism is 24/7. You know, you're always, uh, a fireman. You're always a policeman, policewoman. You're always in military. I mean, it's just that, it's that personality, it's that attitude. It's that selfless service, you know? So really appreciate it because you demonstrate the best we have. And, um, you know, uh, you go well and beyond, you know? And, uh, really, really do appreciate that, especially with the schools, you know? That they look up to our men and women in red, blue, and green and not shy away from them. So the more you're out there, the better we are. So thank you.
I would just say thank you sincerely. And obviously Carroll County is safer because of you and all that you're representing here today. And thank all of them, obviously not all in attendance, but we greatly appreciate all the volunteers and paid fire in EMS. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't we, uh, do a happy snap? Matt will come out of the magic door.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
See you, Mike.
Thank you. Okay, ladies, why don't you come on up and let's talk about an approval of a resolution, consideration of bond authorization, authorizing resolution.
That's a lot of resolution.
It is.
We're going to come to a resolution.
I feel like I got two resolutions, two, uh, two resolutions in there. Ladies.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning to both of you.
Joining me is Emily Fustig from our bond counsel firm, McKenna, Shelton, and Hen. Uh, we're before the board this morning. For our annual process, we lead into a bond financing. As Commissioner Rothstein said, we'll be going to New York next week.
Week after.
Week after.
You can go next week.
Not without you guys. For the bond rating analyst to review our financials and, and give us our good news ratings, right? So your action today would be to consider the resolution, which would authorize the issuance of $30 million worth of tax exempt bond financing. Um, this is used to finance multiple projects. I've included in your listing the projects that this $30 million would cover. It includes a lot of public school projects as well as, uh, majority of watershed projects that have been approved through the CIP process. Um, we'll be advertising the bond sale on the first two weeks of November and holding that, the sale on November 16th. Uh, and at that time, we'll be back in front of you with the hopefully good news of the rates, although rates are increasing over last year with the market to be expected. So I will ask Ms. Fustig to walk you through the resolution, which they have prepared.
Yes, good morning, everyone. I see some familiar faces and some new faces. So, uh, thank you for having me here today.
Morning.
Um, I don't know if you already have, but I just passed around, but it was just a copy of the resolution. Just in case, I wanted to bring it. So, uh, thank you to Jenny for the introduction. And yes, so this is, um, really the second step in terms of the approvals for a bond financing. The county does typically issue bonds every year. First, the state does approve, uh, bond authorizing amounts for the county. And then we come before you all with specific projects every year that the county intends to finance. So what this bond resolution is doing is it is authorizing a not-to-exceed amount. We might come in under that, um, but a, a maximum amount we could issue this year for these projects. Um, it is authorizing the county to go out and publish a notice of sale, which is how the prospective bidders on the bonds know that we're going to hold this bond sale in November. The county typically has numerous bidders. Um, various banks will come in and place online bids at the bond sale to get you all the, the hopefully best interest rate available in the market on those days. And so what this is authorizing is what that form of bond would look like, what that notice of sale would look like. And then we would come back before you after the bond sale on the sale day.
Thank you.
What are the rates?
So I know Jenny looked them up this morning, and I think they're around like 4.1, 4.2.
So Jennifer Derrickson told me this morning that Cecil County issued last week at 4.10, and she would expect us to be probably around lower fours. Of course, that can change.
Sure.
Depending on what the markets are from now till bond sale in a month, but that's where they're at right now.
Yeah, the benefit of the county's great rating and the public sale process that the county goes through is you really know that you're getting on that day really what the best rate in the market is. And the county's financial advisor, what they do is they also will monitor the market going up to the sale. It happens very rarely, but there have been years where they suggest the sale gets either pushed forward or backward a little bit, so they are constantly monitoring that as well.
And then for the edification of myself, my colleagues, and the community, the rates range from where we are, as strong as we are, you know, right now, to if we weren't as strong as we were, would it be a dramatic difference in rate change? I mean, if we were not as showing as a triple, triple A's we are, and we only got two out of the three type of thing, what's the...
Definitely be higher. I can't give you the exact range. I'm not sure what that, but it would definitely be higher because that would be the risk the bond, the banks and the bond buyers would be taking on our county. So the fact that we are triple, triple A, we're a lower risk, which means we should get the best rate.
Yeah, and that's really what it comes down to is being as strong as we are, it's telling the banks and the bank community that we are at the minimal risk in issuing these bonds, so, which is again, kudos to everyone, you know, and how we do our business. So, okay.
Motion to approve the bond authorizing resolution is presented by bond counsel.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Thank you, ladies, very much. Is there any discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, let's talk about requests for public hearing regarding Babylon Road closure.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, commissioners.
I apologize just real quick. Chris, is there anyone on the line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Gentlemen.
Good morning. The Department of Public Works for some time has been working to replace the structure on Babylon Road due to significant environmental impacts. The estimated construction cost to replace that is over 1.85 million dollars at this time. Babylon Road structure over Silver Run is located just north of Camp Station Road and Mayberry Road. It is a single-lane acro panel truss with steel floor beams and a stringer structure built in 1960 with some minor repairs to the abutments in 2016. The structure is inspected every two years with the actual truss being inspected every year. It's currently restricted to 24,000 pounds for single axle and 43,000 pounds combination. As we work through this process and evaluate the environmental impacts of the proposed alignment, it was determined that the replacement structure is going to have significant environmental impacts to over 11,850 square feet of wetland. This alignment utilizes the current right-of-way that we own, and then we turn back as quickly as we can back to Babylon Road. This turn back to reduce the impacts over the 11,850 will require additional right-of-way that we don't own at this time. As we've progressed through the design, we estimated the replacement costs of 1.85 million dollars, which the county will be responsible for their share, which will be about $625,000. That includes right-of-way and some, and wetland costs. Traffic counts recently collected in May of 2023 were 85 vehicles per day in the area of the structure. So far, the county has paid an estimated $65,000 for the design costs. It's estimated if we were to stop our design at this time, we would be responsible for about $148,000 of design costs that the federal government state highway has paid. With this project not being fully funded in the CIP at this time and the limited traffic on this roadway, substantial construction costs and environmental impacts, we are recommending that a public hearing be held to close this structure or this roadway at the time this structure is no longer serviceable, meaning it would stay open until our inspectors have said this structure can no longer sustain the weight of traffic, and then we would close the road permanently.
Are you saying that we've put in 148,000 to this?
What we have, we have put in 65,000, over 65,000. Now, we typically pay 20% of the design costs and state highway, federal highway pay 80%. If we were to stop the design where we are now, we would be responsible for 148,000, $150,000. We've had some cost-sharing challenges with this project already in regards to state highway and us. We've worked those out, but our repayment, we estimate right now would be around 148, $150,000.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
All right, so walk me through this very, just so I understand. So this bridge was set to be replaced, but due to unforeseen circumstances based on the impact that it would have, the construction would have on surrounding wetlands that increased the cost significantly to the point where the recommendation now is to leave the bridge open as long as humanly possible while it's safe to leave it open? And then what happens?
And then the road, so, so again, what you have said to that point is correct. We have, and I would let the commissioners know, in previous boards, we have explored and exhausted other options to take a lower-cost route that wouldn't go through wetlands. Those options have not been successful in negotiations. So I also want to let you know that we haven't done this in a vacuum. We have consulted with both, all of our public safety agencies to include fire and rescue and law enforcement, if this should come to pass, that, that you all would decide to go to public hearing. Now, with that being said, then it, yes, the, the structure is on the list, but the longer that we keep this project going forward, the more potential that we incur to pay back a greater deal to, you know, federal and state government for any sharing as we do that. And particularly since it is not funded in the CIP, there really is no way for us to move forward because the funding simply isn't there to, you know, to construct this. And when you look at the numbers, you know, quite frankly, it has become a very costly project for the amount of traffic that that structure would see. But yes, going through the wetlands in a final short answer becomes a very costly proposition and really expands the cost of, of that structure.
And so forgive me, and I'm not trying to be rebarbative, I promise, so. I'm imagining that the replacement bridge could not be constructed within the footprint that currently exists for...
That's correct.
And I'm imagining that has nothing to do with us, it has to do with, with environmental regulations, whatever. That's kind of, almost like a paradox, isn't it? Kind of ironic, right? That they say you have to do it this way, but because you're doing it that way, you're destroying the environment that you're supposed to be protecting at this, God bless you, the same time. So it's...
Well, and again, there, we, could there be another avenue other than the wetlands there could? But the county does not own that property to not go through the wetland. And as I said earlier, negotiations failed in attempts to, to gain that property. So we are forced with what the county already owns, which unfortunately is through wetland areas. So I just want to be clear that there would be a cheaper alternative coming off of that bridge, we just haven't been successful in, in purchasing that land.
And how often is the bridge inspected?
Go ahead.
So it's, the overall inspection is every two years, but because it's this type of truss bridge, the connections are inspected yearly.
Right.
So we have eyeballs on it yearly.
And we, we always want to make sure, as you can see from the picture that Chris has displayed, there is not a great, this is a blue-sky day with little water. There's not a great deal of distance between the top of the water line and the bottom of the structure, which meaning anytime that steel gets water, that causes even greater concern for either debris or just the water itself or other contaminants, you know, having an issue with the bridge. And we're before you today because I think it is very important. You all just recognized it today with October being, you know, safety month, and we did it last month, we're prepared this month, we're being prepared. We're preparing you. What we're saying is, we don't want to get to the 10th thing and come before you and say, oh my goodness, the sky is falling and the bridge must close. That's, that's not our thing. Our thing is, do we have time now? Let's make a conscious and educated decision that we want to, you know, if, when time comes to pass, that the investment is going to be too much and we close it, are we prepared? Meaning that we can literally go ahead and, you know, put the message out, we can prepare the signs, we can have everything in place that should our bridge engineer get out there and inspect it, goodness forbid, a couple, couple months from now and say, hey, we, we can't do anything more with that, then it's a simple notification. We must enact this part, and we put the signs up, and we move on from there. So, so that's our whole goal here, is to, to bring before you and not allow our, our customers, our taxpayers, to throw good money after bad. And unless we have another option, that's what we're doing.
And I, so I totally take that point. I guess my concern is that, concern of, obviously about the, the fair rating of the structure, but, but, so again, just walk me through this. We get to the end of the, you know, reliability of the bridge, right?
Yep.
And the bridge gets closed. I mean, do, at that point, do we even attempt to replace the bridge, or is it, it's closed forever at that point?
It would be closed and removed.
Yes.
And you said about 80-some people use, 80-some vehicles use this, this road every day?
Yeah. So we, I have had, you know, historically, and particularly when Commissioner Wance was here through the last administration, we, we had one gentleman who was emailing, you know, without going into those names, I proactively sent an email to him. He's a local doctor here in the county, has lived on the road for years. I would let you know two things. One, that he was very appreciative of the surface hardening that was done on the road. He had been a proponent of that for many years. And two, he understood that when it got to that point about the investment of tax dollars. So he had no issue with that, and he appreciated the follow-up to let him know. Because I, I was indeed, didn't want to do anything in the blind and let him know that our intent was to come before you with this, with this thing. Now, of course, we may see other people, and that's the whole point of the public hearing. Our point here only today is to ask you to have the public consider that, and then it would again become your decision. If the answer was no, we'd have to have another discussion. Are we gonna fund any more money in the CIP, or what's your intent?
And so basically today, you guys just want the public hearing to be able to have the public come talk about this, have citizens come talk, okay?
That, that's required, yep.
Or the decision is to move forward.
Yep.
No public hearing.
I think I'd rather do the public hearing, to be honest. Rather hear what citizens who live there have to say about it.
And, and you know, that's our thought because again, that, that gives you a gauge that if you, if you do get, you know, many that do it, then again, that's other consideration for how the money's spent. Because ultimately, we will have to do something. This is another one of those issues that a bridge or a structure built in the 1960s, you know, there will come a time that we have to make that decision.
Right, right.
This bridge is posted. Has it been for a long time? And then what's the next steps? Would, would the posting, would the restrictions change, or the next steps, close it?
We'll get it down to about 6,000 pounds, and then we'll, then we'll close it. Or we may get to a point where we have a member that is deteriorated, that it, it could go from, from here, the next inspection, they go, this member is, is beyond repair, you gotta close it. So.
And you're, you know, you're...
You don't know what that is.
You, you have discussed with us, we're experiencing another bridge in the county, where we, it gets to a certain point, and even though that particular bridge is up for replacement, you know, we don't have that magic. We, we do the best we can with getting out and using our techniques of inspection today, but there are some times when it literally just happens and we have to take action.
Okay, any other, any discussion regarding this?
Motion to go to a public hearing for the closure of Babylon Road Bridge.
Second.
Got a motion, I got a second. Thank you, gentlemen. Any discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna talk about truck restrictions regarding Brown Road. Are there any public comments, either on the phone or in here? Seeing none. Gentlemen.
Thank you. So we're here today to recommend the restriction of vehicles over 26,000 gross vehicle pounds, gross vehicle weight for Brown Road to travel from Old Westminster Pike to Lawndale Road. That would be a through. Any, any local trips, local deliveries, anything like that, they would still be allowed, but this is traveling from one end all the way to the other. We've received a request in regards to this road, and we also had, have had a large truck stuck on this road that our staff had to work to help them get out. Currently, according to Google Maps, it's 1.4 miles from Old Westminster Pike to Lawndale Road and with a travel time of about three minutes. Brown Road in the area of Old Westminster Pike and Arabian Drive is a two-lane, 20-foot-wide roadway with a center line and edge line. As you get further through the roadway towards Lawndale Road, it reduces down to 13 feet, and in some places maybe a little bit narrower than that. The roadway has several horizontal, vertical curves. In one area, it's a 90-degree turn at the top of the grade. Current traffic counts that were collected were found that we have 459 vehicles per day in the area of Old Westminster Pike and 188 vehicles in the area of Lawndale Road. We don't have a lot of through traffic on this roadway. If we were to place restrictions on this roadway, here are the two options that motorists have to get from Old Westminster Pike and Brown Road to Lawndale and Brown Road. They could use Maryland 140 to Maryland 91 to Lawndale Road, distance of 5.1 miles and travel time of about nine minutes. Or you could go Old Westminster Pike to Maryland 140 to Sandy Mount Road to Lawndale Road, distance of 3.5 miles, time of about six minutes. So again, it's the department's recommendation that this roadway be posted for a 26,000-pound vehicle restriction. That would keep all your delivery vehicles and things of that nature, but it would not allow tractor-trailers, loaded dump trucks, you know, those, those type of heavy construction and, and trucks to travel through. If you're having a water delivery for your pool, no problem. If you're having, you know, any stone on your driveway, your driveway repaved, no problem. You know, if you live on that road and try, and drive one of these vehicles, that's fine as long as you make a stop on that road, just prohibiting the through trips.
And commissioners, obviously, you know, because you hear about traffic all the time, we don't take any, you know, traffic question lightly. We evaluate them all, we evaluate them all seriously, and when it, we see it as a needed issue, we bring it to your attention. In this case, as Chris mentioned earlier, with the, with the safety of the traveling public and the fact that we have had vehicles get stuck in portions of this road, and most critically, we wouldn't come to you with this unless we had a couple of detour routes, which you see up, that we believe are detour routes that are reasonable and, you know, both in mileage and time, that would allow this to occur. Because we do understand, you know, business travels over all of our roads, they have to have roads to be able to conduct their business, but we are also very sensitive to our number-one priority, which is the safety of our traveling public. So that's why we're here before you today. Any questions?
Are you asking us a question that we take a look at either option one or...
No, we just brought those to your attention to demonstrate that there are viable options so that one couldn't say, well, great, you're doing that, and there's no way for us to get around, I gotta go 100 miles.
Now, the, the decision here is about the 26,000...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Correct.
The law...
critically, we wouldn't come to you with this unless we had a couple of detour routes, which you see up, that we believe are detour routes that are reasonable and, you know, both in mileage and time that would allow this to occur. Because we do understand, you know, business travels over all of our roads, they have to have roads to be able to conduct their business, but we are also very sensitive to our number one priority, which is the safety of our traveling public. So that's why we're here before you today. Any questions?
Are you asking us a question that we take a look at either option one or?
No, we just brought those to your attention to demonstrate that there are viable options so that one couldn't say, well, great, you're doing that and there's no way for us to get around, I gotta go a hundred miles.
Now, the, the decision here is about the 26,000.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Correct.
The law does require that, that there be a viable option.
Sure.
And obviously we want, wouldn't want to cause undue cost to anybody that is using that roadway while the detour routes are fairly reasonable compared to the through trip.
Okay, thanks.
If we were to make this change, is there any, I guess, policy or procedure in which we'd, and I don't mean enforce in a strong sense, but sort of educate the public and those that have been using this for some time, that this has now been changed? Are we just primarily looking at putting up signage and such? I was just kind of curious.
So we, we put signs up, we put a plaque and flags over top of the, and to make people aware of it. And obviously from an enforcement standpoint, there is somewhat of a grace period for people, but they're right there when you, so if you're going to turn on the road and you're driving a vehicle that would be restricted, you would know, you would see it before you make the turn to get onto the vehi, onto the roadway.
And we do work hand in hand. In fact, we dashed out of a meeting with Captain DeBoer and Maria regarding the upcoming sign installation, because how we work hand in hand is while those signs come in, roads, engineering and Department of Public Works, we put them up. So that, we talk about all these issues on a regular basis. So their traffic enforcement team will be well aware of this and as Chris mentioned, to educate people as they come along. The sheriff and his team are, are very nice in that respect that, hey, it just started, you know, let's not come through again.
Doug, honestly, I can see you and Chris being dashing, but being dashed over here,
that's a different story.
We dashed.
Okay.
Upstairs.
Just saying.
Up the stairs.
Okay. Any other discussion on this?
Motion to approve the through travel restriction of 26,000 pounds gross vehicle weight for Brown Road.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion seen here, none all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we're going to talk about the closure of a portion of Pinch Valley Road and traffic analysis follow-up. Are there any public comments that want to be made prior to this discussion? Okay. Why don't we just take a second, fill out the salmon color card and?
Commissioner, while we're waiting, if I may, Mr. Brown, can you, can you, I'm going back to the Babylon Road issue, so I apologize. What was the cost of that again, if we move forward? You had a ballpark of?
1.8 million.
1.805.
1.85 million in construction costs.
Okay, thank you.
And our portion of that would be approximately $625,000.
Okay, thank you.
County dollars.
Okay. And Chris, I just wanted to ensure there's no one on the line, correct?
No, sir.
Okay. So let's just take a small tactical pause and, Tara, you ready?
Sure.
Huh?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you trying to be funny? Are you trying to be like somewhat jovial?
Yes.
Okay. I think the first is Ms. Tara Bataglia, why don't you come on up and say again your name and your residence?
Thank you. My name is Tara Bataglia. I live at 1229 Woods Road, which is adjacent to Pinch Valley Road. You know, lately I've also noticed a lot of noise pollution from the airport. And what I mean by that is we have now jets that are coming in and out that are currently flying over the Pinch Valley, Woods Road, Hugh Shop Road area. And right now I got a concern regarding, is my property tax value going to drop? Is the value of my home going to drop? And, and whatever amount of time that my family lives there, are we going to be able to sell our home when the airport expansion is done? I highly doubt it. I mean, we hear complaints on the news from BWI and people that live in that area and how it has gotten busier and busier. When we purchased our home, there was no disclosure of the airport expansion happening or Pinch Valley Road being closed. I do find it interesting that we're going to give a homeowner purchasing 36 acres of their property over a hundred and some thousand dollars when they don't even live in those homes, they're Airbnbs. That's a little of an issue to me. I mean, we're going to give someone money, but they don't even live in the one house where there's going to be a cul-de-sac built in. I mean, is, do they even have a license to be able to do that? That's a good question. Is that property an ag preserve? Because it is currently ag property that's being used. There's animals, there's crops. I mean, what about the wetlands that are there, the wildlife protection signs that have been adjacent there? And not just with Pinch Valley Road being closed, but now they're also talking about expanding 97. So how are the residents supposed to get where they need to go? Hugh Shop Road and 140 is a horrible intersection. So these traffic study that was done, did they even look at that? Did they look at how the traffic would be increased there at the intersection of Hugh Shop Road and 140? What about Indian Valley Trail? What has been looked there? Is that going to be widened before Pinch Valley Road is closed so people can get to where they need to go to 97 Pleasant Valley Road? There's just, this seems rushed. And I know I hear that the airport expansion's been in the works for 20 years, but in 20 years, did no one look at these things? Did no one ask the residents or go to the doors of them or stand at the properties and, and listen and hear what is happening in that area? And I think just slow this down. I'm sorry, but taking money from the federal government to expand the airport, at what cost? Could be the tax money you receive from your, from your residents. So thank you.
No, thank you.
Ed Cuman.
Good morning.
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 It's my understanding on the agenda that with regard to Pinch Valley, I didn't say who I was, Edmund Cuman, Ned, 1201 Woods Road, Westminster, Maryland. Then on your agenda are a couple of items. One, dealing with the closure. I know you've acted officially to close the road, but the, back in March, I think we understood that there were going to be some study of this and that on your agenda, DPW has two proposals to do a thorough traffic study that, the only thing that concerned me was that on the, on the one with the land acquisition, DPW was making a motion to recommend that you proceed with those acquisitions pre-eastments, but on the traffic study, there was no, no motion to do that. Now, there may be a very good reason for that. Maybe they just want the board, but I, I'm just here to urge the board to perform the necessary traffic study that's going to need to be done. I think I had, you know, suggested that you all take a trip out there and understand that when this road is physically closed, you're pushing everything over to Indian Valley Trail. And if you don't, if you're not familiar with Indian Valley Trail, you need to be. And that's something that a traffic study would embrace the conditions of that road and what needs to be done and the implications on all the other intersections at 140 and Hugh Shop, 140 and Royal Road, Metta Branch. So I'm just urging you to perform, get that study performed and let's see what, what it is. Also, I think there was some kind of, the DPW did some sort of study, put counters out or something this spring. I, I didn't see, see that for myself, but I'm not home all the time. And so I'd be really interested to see what those numbers have come up with. But the trick would be for sure, this is all the result of the airport. And I, for one, as a taxpayer, think the federal government should be picking up the tab for any expenses that the county may incur for redoing Indian Valley Trail or maybe making another road that goes parallel to Pinch Valley Road, whatever. That's happening already down on Metta Branch Road. There's money there that's come in and so all I'm urging is that you, you get that traffic study so you can see, you know, what the upshot of this is going to be. It's being proactive, just like you were talking about earlier. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And both Ned, Tara, appreciate both your comments, very well thought out, just personally speaking and took a lot of notes on what both of you shared. Okay, gentlemen, who's starting?
Good morning.
On March 2nd, 2023, the Board conducted a public hearing and on March 25th, the Board signed a resolution closing approximately 2,700, 2,700 linear feet of Pinch Valley Road for, for the safety enhancement project at the Carroll County Regional Airport. The slide here that I have up now is show, shows that closed area, there'll be a cul-de-sac at each end. This show, this is a cut through the area that shows where Pinch Valley Road will, will ultimately be once we do the, the grading for the, the new runway. So you can see it's, it's approximately, I want to say it's like 50 feet.
I apologize, just real quick, can you hear in the back? Can, can you hear Eric in the back? Okay. I just want to make sure. Thanks.
See, it shows, it shows the, how much fill will be over top of Pinch Valley Road for the new runway. Um, this is, this slide shows the existing wetlands and stream that are in the area that, that people have mentioned, that they will be mitigated. And this next slide shows that we, the mitigation, the, the wetlands will be established elsewhere and the, the water that flows through that area will be put through this box culvert, or yeah, the box culvert. So the public hearing, the Board requested that DPW perform some traffic analysis on the area impacted by the closure. And so now, I'll now pass it over to Chris LaLanchin to discuss the data collected by the Bureau of Engineering.
Thank you. So in March of 2023, we collected traffic counts using the road tubes as was referred to, and you can see on the slide, we, where we collected the counts. And Eric, I guess we go to the next slide, maybe it's a little, it's a little easier to see. We have the area of, of Pinch Valley area that we, was collected. On the north side of the closure, we're seeing 175 cars a day. That's a 72-hour count we collected for three days. We averaged on those three days, we have 175 average vehicles in a 24-hour period. So in a 10-hour normal peak, you know, a day, we're saying about 17, 18 cars. Just north of Indian Valley Trail, we have 163 cars. And as we work out towards Hugh Shop Road and 140, the volumes increase as the density increases. So we see most of those, those folks that are using this roadway are traveling out to 140 and Hugh Shop Road. We don't see a lot of tra, there are people, there are people that are going through the area that would be closed, but nothing like we see towards Hugh Shop and 140, those volumes. Obviously, they're trying to get to 140 as quickly as they can and that's the shortest and easiest way to get to where they're going. We have counts on Indian Valley Trail fairly low and we see the highest towards Pinch Valley, lower towards the Pleasant Valley. So we see folks coming south Indian Valley to Pinch Valley, obviously getting to, to
What would a full traffic study, if performed, be different than what you have already done?
It depends what you ask them to look at.
Right.
Are you looking at level of service based on highway capacity or, or other methods of evaluation? Are you going to look at intersection turning movements? We don't have, we don't know, these are bidirectional counts.
They're just numbers, right.
You know, we, we can see based on where the, the numbers, where the numbers are, which direction, you know, most of the traffic's going. If we were to see, say, Pinch Valley, Pleasant Valley, we were to see a very large number, we'd say, oh, well, most of these people are going north instead of south.
The, the cost associated with doing a additional traffic study beyond this scope, like you're describing, how long does that typically take? I mean, is it a three-day period of time or, I mean, I, I know it would be up to us what we.
So the, the intersection counts are typically a 24-hour, they're done by video now.
Okay.
And the, the video counts are actually extrapolated and put into the software and then analysis is done. So the counts are only in, only normally a AM, PM peak and maybe a Saturday peak if you, if you have a generator that is high in the Saturday. Here, we probably ask them for a 24-hour count, but normally, normally a traffic count only has AM and PM peaks, they don't give you a, a full day.
It's just for me, making a decision on partial information, although albeit, you know, important information provided, it still doesn't have the full picture. So we're speculating, you know, and assuming this is what the vehicles are doing. Yeah, go ahead, please.
You don't know, unless you do a very specialized study.
Yeah.
And do a origin destination with license plate, you don't know where that vehicle starts and where it ends. We can just, again, even with the detail counts, we can speculate that we have 75 here and 24 making a right and we can see on the other, unless we do an origin destination, which we've done very few and, and small sampling of those.
Yeah.
You don't know where they start and where they end. And normally it would only be, say, at Hugh Shop and Pinch Valley and, and Pinch Valley and Pleasant Valley, whether they made that through trip. And those are costly if you do a, an actual origin destination.
I'm just wondering the, one, if we were to add on another attempt to do a, a further in-depth look at a, a traffic study, what the impact would have? Would it just verify what we already know, maybe? Or would it say, hey, this is now, with all these things put in place, we're prepared to make a decision that will have effects on people's, you know, community? I don't know, I'm just kind of, I, I don't want to say I like to spend money and throw it around and I don't and everybody should know that, but I also don't want to make decisions on impacting a community if I haven't used all the resources I have available.
I'm in agreement with that, Commissioner. And, and the other thing too, I'd like more information about, and I understand that the purpose of today was specifically the traffic count for this section of the road. I'm sorry, did you?
Go ahead, finish your book.
No, please, I.
Nope, nope, nope.
Okay. So, so the other thing I'd like to know too, and I know we had talked about this before and I know other citizens had brought this up as well, the alternative routes that, that there may be and whether or not those other ways of getting around, because we went through that presentation just a few minutes ago about the, the restrictions, the 26,000 pound restrictions and the other ways that could be used to, to get to one point to the other. In a situation like this, again, you know, having been to some of these roads and, and having seen what these roads are like, you know, I certainly think that it would be well within the scope of information gathering to determine, you know, what the feasibility would be of improving certain roads to, to convey traffic from one point to the other. And I understand that again, today was specifically about the count of the traffic study, but I agree that I think I'd want a more in-depth study, in more in-depth traffic study as well as figuring out, as Commissioner Rossine said, the impact of that community with these other ways that, that through traffic or even residents who live in that area can, can get around.
Okay. Roberta, you?
Well, with regard to other ways that you can get around, the best person to answer is Chris. I'll let you speak to that.
So I'll answer, you brought something up about studying and then I'll.
Yeah.
So a detailed study may, will be able to tell us delays. You know, say how long you're going to be delayed at Hugh Shop and Pinch Valley, you know, with the additional traffic. And the assumption's going to be made that those 163 cars, a majority of them, based on the, the. a majority of them, based on the normal progression of traffic, they're going to head south. You know, if they were heading north, they're going to head south, and they're going to get to Hughes Shop. There may be some that were going to go out Pleasant, to Pleasant Valley and those areas. But we don't know exactly what human nature's going to do, where somebody chooses. Some people choose to take a four-mile out of the way because they make a right, you know, onto a major roadway instead of a left at a, you know, a non-signalized intersection or whatever. So those somewhat are challenging. Here, yes, some are going to use Indian Valley. And, but a majority of them are going to be coming, probably in the other, you know, coming up the other way, because that's the only side that there is. The traffic study will tell us about traffic volumes and how that's going to function. Roadway improvements and those, that's a whole different study. Those are environmental widening, those are a whole different type of study, and can be costly.
So with the traffic study, the origin destination that you talked about, and when you say that, do you mean, you know, from where they wake up in the morning to where they end up at the end of the day? Are you talking about from, like, say, this particular point to this particular point?
Yeah, we usually pick an intersection, and when that license plate goes by, did it reach the other point at the other end that we're interested in seeing if they made it? And if they didn't, then we say it's not a through trip. Somewhere in between, they stopped.
Okay, so, and I appreciate, I appreciate that dialogue. So I'm trying to put, like I said, and I've said it before, you put everything on the table, and then you decide, okay, what can we do, what makes the most sense, recognizing that everything's out there. And then if we can't, we pull it back off the table. But that's why I'm kind of thinking through this the best I can. Now, Roberta, you?
Well, I think the question the Board needs to ask before, well, first of all, the traffic studies are in the 50, just the basic traffic study, which would tell you level of service, which there's not a level of service issue here. This isn't, these aren't heavily, so they're all going to be A. That our experts already know. And then turning movements. So that'll be the other information that you'd get from a basic traffic study. Might be something I'm missing, and Chris can fill me in. But those are the two really top things that people are usually looking for out of traffic studies, because there's a concern, you know, a big development's going out in, and they're concerned of the impact on 32 and 26. Right?
Thanks.
So, my area, too, so pick on it. But anyway, so I think the question the Board has to ask is, what do they want if they want a study? Though that basic traffic study would cost $50,000 to $60,000, just so you know. Right? Those are the kinds of quotes we have.
Around 45, yeah.
Forty-five, sorry, I didn't need to.
Average 45.
I thought it was like the other day. So, so that's the kind of price. But I don't know that that information would really inform the Commissioners enough to make any kind of decisions about any kind of changes or improvements or that you'd need to make on the rest of the network to improve throughput.
So I understand, I understand that. And that's, again, why I'm putting it on the table, whether we want to go in that direction or not.
I think it would be a lot more expensive to get the kind of information.
There's also, it could be a very much bigger picture, you know, for our government and our staffing and the resources we have, you know, in moving forward with a lot of, you know, these type of decisions, you know? Outsourcing, you know, having, you know, 27 Chris's onboard would be a whole lot of things.
I don't think we want that.
Or at least having two or three. I mean, it's very challenging, because we are limited in resources.
Well, any such study would have to be.
No, no, I agree, I'm just, but, I mean, that's part of this. But Ted, you want to comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to go a little further with where Roberta was heading. I think there's, there's two distinct things on the table here, and I want to make sure it doesn't get muddied. Now, I believe this is true, Eric, if Pinch Valley isn't closed, there is no airport project. Is that right? Okay, so there's no traffic study we're going to do that's going to change that. We're either doing the airport and closing the road, or we're not closing the road and not doing the airport.
Okay.
So any study is about the impact that would go along with that. And right now, I just want to make sure you all know, there is no budgeting, no planning in place for making any road improvements in connection with all this. So any money that you would put into a study is new money we would have to budget. And my argument would be, if you're going to spend the money to do that, it ought to be with an idea that you actually plan to do something. There's no point spending it if we're not going to be willing to do the improvements. So we also need to be thinking that step down the road, too. Are we willing to spend money? How much money are we willing to spend in order to make these improvements? You know, if you spend $100,000 on a study, and the improvements that it indicates would cost you $5 million, are we willing to do that? And I know we can't answer this perfectly, but if no, not five, are we willing to spend three? Are we willing to spend one? If there's some point where it's just, it's not going to match up, you know, what it would take to do something and what you're willing to do, then there would be no spend, no sense spending the money on the studies in the first place. So none of this is to say, do it or don't do it. I just want to make sure we're thinking about what steps follow each of the early ones.
Now, I definitely appreciate, absolutely appreciate this discussion. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I, yeah, thank you, Mr. Zaleski. I've been, I've been listening intently. I, if we were able to get more data, better data, in an affordable way, I'd certainly be for it. It sounds like, in my view, it's not quite affordable. But in listening, I, that's what I anticipated this briefing really being about. Pinch Valley Road is going to close. So how do we improve the lives of the people that live there and the roads around them? That's what I thought this briefing was going to be about, and that's what I think we need to be focused on. Is it widening lanes? Is it making it more easily, easier for people to take a left turn and a right turn? I mean, that's what we need to be focused on, because, because my understanding is Pinch Valley Road is going to close. So let's take a look at some of the roads that have been mentioned and make them as good as we possibly can. I think we owe that to the people that live around, that on Pinch Valley Road and around it and use it. Because, I mean, it's Pinch Valley Road today, but tomorrow it's somewhere in our district, right? So that's what I would be saying, I'd be having the same conversation, and I'd be asking for the same thing, which is what I, what I was concerned about when this came up in March, is that we really hadn't taken a look at that. So I appreciate the study, and it says that there's, I mean, I guess, you can consider it moderate use. I mean, people use the road. Any inconvenience on any county resident should be a concern for this Board, and I think it is. But we need to figure out how we're going to make this better when Pinch Valley Road closes, if we can. That's, that's what I think we need to focus on. And that will cost money. But spending it now on a study, I guess we found out, is going to be really not necessary and maybe not affordable, so.
Yeah, Commissioner Garen, I appreciate, and that's kind of where I was going as well. And I also appreciate Mr. Zaleski bringing us back down to ground level, and that is, you know, any study we do, anything we resource as a study, we have to be willing, prepared legitimately to do something about it. And if we're not, then we're doing a study and putting it on a shelf, and that's false hope for a community. So, you know, but again, that's why I want to put this all out there. It's, it is difficult, because any modifications to any of these roads, would it support the community any better or not? And is it feasible, you know, money-wise, resource-wise, to even, to modify any of these roads? And it doesn't sound like it is. Is that correct?
There are a lot of limitations. One, starting with is right-of-way. Do we have right-of-way to make the improvements?
Okay.
Then the proximity of, you know, do you make it another, do you make it two lanes? Is it, is it 20 feet? Is it 15 feet? Are they environmental? Eric talked about some wetlands already.
Yeah.
I suspect there's, there's others.
Yeah.
It gets very costly very quickly when you start taking an existing road and widening it or making it, you know, wider. Are there spot improvements, maybe? Are you talking about, you know, an area for a path, for people to pass? You know, some of those already exist. It's to what extent?
So for me, right, and if I, if I may, I understand.
If you wanted to say anything else, feel free, or you won't say?
I was just hanging around in case the conversation right there.
So for me, and maybe because I, you know, I'm more naive or whatever the case may be, for me, the intent of doing an additional, more in-depth study is not as to whether we a priori decide to take action, but to see what the results are, to demonstrate whether and where we need to take action to improve roads. And I certainly understand that there are going to be associated costs, and like with Babylon Road, right, the number of unexpected costs that can arise during a project. I fully understand that and expect that, right? And I certainly also, you know, not like any of us need to be reminded that we are under serious fiscal constraints. We have serious financial and budgetary problems moving ahead in the coming fiscal year. But I also understand how difficult a road being closed can be. And if we're talking about, you know, 10 people who are using that road on a daily basis as a point of conveyance, as a means to convey them as a through-traffic entity, right? Versus somebody who necessarily uses that road every day to get to or from work, right? I think that the more in-depth study is going to give us a better understanding of, you know, what it is that we really are contending with back there. And I take the point that Pinch Valley has to close, that this airport project is happening. But I also understand that, that, you know, Commissioner Garen, I know Commissioner Rossin, you alluded to it as well, that, you know, we do have citizens who live back there, and that they're not using this road just for a means of conveyance from one place to another. It, you know, it is going to have an impact. And if we are going to be impacting a pretty substantial area back there, as well as the people who do use it for through-traffic, then I think that having that additional information, yes, will be costly, but it's certainly appropriate to the circumstances that we are confronted with here.
So, yeah, no, go ahead.
A couple of things. One, I think we ought to take the 50 grand for any more vehicle counts and put it into construction. I think it's a waste. The big deal is, if I'm on the north side of the closure, and I come out the south way because I have a lowboy, a tag-along horse trailer, and I can't get out the other way, we have to make it that they can get out the other way. And Ted, I understand what you're saying. I said when we talked about closing Pinch Valley, if we want to do safety modification in the airport, and we want to close Pinch Valley, we owe it to the residents to make sure they can safely get out each way. And if we didn't plan for that, I'm sorry, I wasn't here, but that wasn't very smart. So whatever we need to make the decisions on, on Indian Valley, do two turns need to be widened? And again, nicely put, I don't much care if it's wetlands or you need a right-of-way or whatever. Whoever decided that we were doing a 40-foot fill there and we had to close Pinch Valley Road should have foreseen that we needed to do some road improvement. So if we didn't have it budgeted, we need to. And the only reason I see any more dollars spent on counting cars is if you need it to do that design. Otherwise, let's, let's do the road closure studies and figure out what we got to do so people can get in and out.
So I do believe there's cul-de-sacs on each closure point, so large vehicles, school buses, will be able to make that turn. So if anybody can't get out one way, they come around to the cul-de-sac, and they can turn around, fire trucks, school buses, everybody can make the turn into cul-de-sac. So we shouldn't have any, any trouble with anybody being able to get out of their property and get to either Pleasant Valley or Indian Valley.
Yeah, I'm concerned people that, 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 I understand the cul-de-sacs, but if they were going one direction, and now they have to go the other direction, we need to make sure those roads have the proper turns. Because, you know, you're right, yes, school buses, emergency vehicles, everybody can use the cul-de-sac. But we need to make sure they can use the roads. Maybe, maybe Hughes Shop does need one more turn lane. And if it does, it does. We need to look at that. And that's the study. I think the road construction studies are what we need to do. The only reason we do any more of this is if you need that as a prerequisite to that study.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking at 163 vehicles north of Indian Valley. If they were all added, that's, you know, that's 17 trips in an hour, in a peak hour. That's maybe one or two vehicles, you know? Or, you know, even at the cycle length of Hughes Shop and 140, it's not a lot.
Yep.
Not a lot of trips in what we see overall in the network. And it is an impact. It's just, it may be hard to quantify that small number in that larger intersection movement and the signal to figure out that the, that those 163 vehicles, you know, we need to add 30 more feet to the turn lane or something like that. It may be difficult for, to quantify that.
So basically, there's two decisions. One is moving forward and closing Pinch Valley Road, and the second?
That's already decided.
Yeah, so that's, so really, the second decision is.
Whether you want any further study?
Any further, the study for modification of this road network, correct? Is that where we're at right now? I mean, okay.
Is that something that, that we have people in-house to do, or is that a consultant?
It's consultants. Those are consultants.
Brian, you had something to say?
Yeah, I just want to close one more loop. That was mentioned this morning by Ms. Pataglia. And I believe it was mentioned in May as well, that, you know, this is a project that's related to the airport. The feds are paying a lot of money for the airport improvement project, we all know that. We don't have a clear, defined answer if they will fund any of this work. You know, the federal government may say, you know, the closure of Pinch Valley Road does not warrant any other additional funding for this area. So, you know, just, again, being mindful, we don't know the answer to that. We have a good feeling, but, you know, to, back to Ted's point, you know, this is, you know, a project that was not budgeted, and most likely will not be funded by the federal government or state government for any of these road improvements.
But we have made a formal request back to them, correct?
We have not, because there's no dollars associated with the work yet.
Okay.
There'd have to be a plan, I would guess.
It would have to be something, okay.
Thank you.
So the thought is rather than a traffic study, to look at a road improvement study for?
One second, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, so the thought then is rather than, as Commissioner Kyler has said, not a traffic study, but a road improvement study specifically for Indian Valley?
Whatever, yeah, whatever has to be done next for.
Sir, unfortunately, by design, we have open comments for a few minutes, and then comes back to us, so not to go back and forth. So, thank you.
Mr. Lennox, and real quick question. I'm looking here at this list. What is the traffic count for Indian Valley? I'm trying to find this on this very tiny sheet, and I'm not seeing.
Sorry, it's 86, which would be north of Pinch Valley, and then 28 and 53 south of Pleasant Valley.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't know what the next step is. But for me, it's pretty simple. If we, the county, do this right, and we is the five of us, we're the ones that, you know, take the heat and else what, what else? But if we do this right, and we make improvements to the roads around Pinch Valley, I'm going out of limb here, but the people that live on Pinch Valley may actually come to appreciate what's been done. Because now they're living on a cul-de-sac, they don't have people driving by, and now when they need to get someplace, there's been minimal delay. So that's going to be our gauge, whether we do this right or not. And it sounds like, and I don't know what we need next, we need a motion, we need you to come back, as we need to make sure that we are improving the roads around Pinch Valley. So maybe our wish of these folks even being happier than they are now, perhaps, possibly, could come true.
So the first step would be to figure out what construction needs or would warrant it to be done, is that? And that goes back to what you were saying.
Yeah.
Correct, Doug?
Yeah, so, and that's exactly where I was going to get. So to what Commissioner Kyler said, well, it would provide us some direction, and that's what your statement said, is that if, when the road closes, you just want to make sure that whether they're exiting out this side or that side, that their exit is seamless. So if you want to look at those exit points, right? So if you have X amount of cars that are leaving from there and seeing what's going on, do you need to make any improvements on this? do you need to make any improvements on this side of Pinch Valley? Or do you need to make any improvements on that side of Pinch Valley to get cars in and out of Pinch Valley? That's the sort of clear direction then staff can hone in on, to say, here is what we need to do. Maybe it is a turn lane, maybe we need to put down a, a little bit wider road, ways to make that area safer. But that's the, that's the sort of thing that will also allow us, you know, whether it's in-house or out-of-house, to define that.
Yes, and, and a budget number, you know?
Right, and give it, and sharpen it down.
Or there's a turn on Indian Valley that I can't go around with a lowboy. But it's wetlands on both sides, and so we can't do anything. And, but, but that's, that's the answers, and, and a budget number, I think.
Now, is that, Commissioner Guerin, makes sense? I mean, that's kind of where you were going as well.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I think we're all starting to move in that same direction.
Okay.
And you said you and I wouldn't agree today.
Yeah, there's-
I did say that, actually.
Look, what I'd like to do is, uh, I know it's scary to go off-script a, a little bit, but, um, you know, and Ned and Terry, you want to make further public comment. If I allow you to come on up just for a minute, make whatever public comment you want, but it is not interaction. So, but if you, feel free.
I just want to ask you all to be mindful, back in July, when 140 was closed down due to the gas leak, I will tell you, Pinch Valley, Indian Valley Trail, um, those roads were cluster. Because people coming down ninety-seven, coming ninety-seven south, they turn on the Pleasant Valley Road, turn on Pinch Valley, turn on Indian Valley, just to get to the other side of 140. So, you know, when, when you're talking about like Indian Valley Trail, and you, you know, it's a done deal, you're closing Pinch Valley, that I need you guys to keep in mind, too. You know, it's, it's, it's a very tiny road. If any of you guys have been on Indian Valley Trail, it is small. You can't pass another vehicle on that road at all. So, you know, if, if this is what's going to happen, I think that's what the focus needs to be, is, is looking at widening any Valley Trail, you know, making it more accessible, you know, for anybody that, you know, lives in that area to get from point A to point B and, and back. But I just want you guys to understand that, like, it was the autobahn, it was ridiculous, so.
Got it, appreciate it, thank you so much, Ned?
I'll ditto that, and I, I'll just say, I think Commissioner Kyler's on the right track. The traffic study, a detailed traffic study would, would be invaluable, but you don't have the money. The feds aren't going to include this in, I just heard that. So, they should have done that, but they did, they don't. This is the problem, money, okay?
Absolutely.
What's going to happen if you do nothing? You will fill that area down there, and you will deflect all the traffic that does come through onto Indian Valley Trail. So, you can sit back and do nothing, and wait until there are head-on collisions on those over-verticals, or cars, and people coming in to the then county commissioners complaining about it. So, but you've got time, because I think the fill isn't going to go in until when? Five years from now? Something like that?
Three to five.
Three to five years.
How many?
Three to five years.
We said three to five.
Three to five. So, I think the focus should be finding some money to get out, start putting money aside to rehab Pinch Valley Trail, to make it, to go to the worst spots first, the over-verticals, and then work the widening. Otherwise, it, it's going to be a mess. Because it will be open, you will not close Indian Valley Trail, and people will keep going because they have, ones that are heading up to Gettysburg, coming out of our area. So, it's just a matter of, okay, find the money to do what you have to do to Indian Valley Trail.
I appreciate it.
And, uh, that's, that's it.
Nope, I, I got it, and I think, uh, and I do appreciate, and part of the conversation we had with, you know, again, Mr. Bokey, was, what's the project? Where, where are we asking for funding? Where are we looking so? And I think each one of our districts, we have our own Indian Valley Trail in our districts. Mine may be Marysville, too, you know, which becomes a nightmare, it's a lot.
I got a couple in mind.
So, you have a couple in your, so, okay, I appreciate it. What we need to do now is any direction, or have we already provided the direction?
Just, just to clarify, I think Doug did a good job, but just, the board, it sounds pretty unanimous in the idea of looking at, at least an in-house analysis of the, the, at least Indian Valley, to make sure that, um, some certain trucks can get around, and, and if not, what maybe we could do to, um, improve those areas, and what, and at, at least a, an approximate cost.
Yeah, is that clear enough guidance for you, Chris?
You talking in-house or consultant?
In-house.
Well, let's at least evaluate whether we think we could do something in-house, and if not, then we can come back with a, a price for a consultant. And then the board can decide where they go from there.
And, and that's fair. I mean, you know, uh, resource, time, people, and money. If we don't have the people and the time, then we got to figure out if, if there, where the money may come from to do this. But that's on you, to staff, to come back to us, to say, this is what the requirement is. Or actually, you know what the requirement is, we just gave it to you, but here's the solution to that requirement.
How to move forward.
Okay, is that good enough for all of us?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Good deal, okay. That's your guidance. Thank you very much.
It was a great discussion, too.
All that came into talk, now let's, let's talk about something easier. Request approval to purchase land for the Airport Runway Safety Improvement Program. Mr. Bokey's leaving you alone on this one, just saying, just, just, you know?
Yes, Commissioners, so this, this, uh, this would be the, the purchase of the, the land that we were, uh, discussing just previously, to, uh, put one of the cul-de-sacs on. I won't, I won't read you the, the exact numbers from the briefing paper, but it's, it's basically, we're buying some, some portion of land in fee simple, some for drainage easement, some for grading easement, and some for irrigation easement, um, all for a total of one hundred and five thousand four ninety-seven. And that is two parcels, parcel ten and parcel fifty-nine. And again, this is in, this is in connection with the runway safety enhancement project.
And ultimately, ninety percent of this would be paid by-
Oh, yes, sorry, ninety percent would be covered by the FAA, uh, five percent state, five percent Carroll County.
So, five percent, we're talking five thousand, seven thousand out of this, or what? What are you saying?
Yeah, five percent of one hundred and five, somebody better imagine.
Ted, you want to share something before we motion?
This isn't really specifically about this decision, but just, I'm not sure with this board, we, we've talked about this, big-picture idea to keep in mind here. With this project, um, we are heavily dependent on FAA funding, but it comes on their schedule, not on our schedule. So, there's a lot that has to happen in terms of us identifying what are eligible costs to be reimbursed, making sure that we're keeping track of those as they're happening, even though they're not always going to be reimbursed in for us what's a timely way. And we're making some significant expenditures at the beginning that we know won't be reimbursed for, for years. So, it's very important that we stay on top of how all this i- is working out, and, and remember kind of what's going on. And, um, another piece of this is the timing is so off, uh, it's likely at some point we will be going for some short-term, uh, uh, loans to, as a cash flow bridge for us. So, um, I don't know when that'll be happening, but at some point, you'll probably be hearing something like that. So, I just thought it was good to have all that in mind, so as other pieces come up, you know, you're thinking about it in terms of the, the whole thing.
I, I appreciate it. Unfortunately, we have Mr. Burdine, and we're blessed to have him to stay on top of it, as he does very diligently. So, I do appreciate it.
How soon does, how soon does this happen?
The, the purchase? Uh, settlement will be, will be scheduled, uh, not, not, not far from today, if, if you all vote to.
So soon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We would then, we would then schedule, schedule a settlement with, with the homeowner.
Okay, okay.
Motion to approve the purchase of land and easements at fourteen seventy Pinch Valley Road for one hundred five thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second and a discussion. Seeing here none at all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about Westminster Area Sidewalk Improvements. Chris, you're like, uh, you know, seen today.
I know, it's Public Works Day.
Wow. Hey, Carrie, take care, Chris. What do we got?
I'll try.
Good morning.
Good morning. The Office of Procurement, in cooperation with Bureau of Engineering, request your approval to award the contract for the Westminster Area Sidewalk Improvements to Psoa Construction Company in the amount of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. The county requested competitive sealed bids and received five responses, with one being disqualified. Psoa Construction submitted the lowest, most responsive and responsible bid that met the criteria listed in this solicitation. The amount is within the adopted budget.
So, as part of the county's effort to upgrade our existing ADA ramps, uh, to current standards, we're going to make improvements at twenty-seven different locations in the Westminster area with this project. It'll include the ramp work, landing areas, and any of the adjacent curbs. Project is expected to take about fifty days. We are familiar with this contract, as some of our staff has worked with them in the past, and, uh, I know they're anxious to get started. They're asking us this morning, uh, when this contract's coming.
Okay, sounds great. Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
I move the Board of Commissioners award the contract Westminster Area Sidewalk Improvements to Psoa Contract Construction Company in the amount of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars.
Second.
One quick question. So, so this is more upgrading to meet standards, then repair, or additions?
This is just ADA ramps. There will be a couple additional ramps in order. We have some diagonal crossings, and because the law requires you have the shortest crossing, they'll make them ninety-degree crossings.
So, so the additional ones are, again, because of changes in rules?
Yeah, they're just a ramp.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, the ADA, we thought we were, we were good when they were installed, and it changes.
Yeah, of course.
Sounds good.
And, and all these improvements are, it looks like they're within District Three, but none of them are within the town of, of Westminster.
No, they're all in.
Just to clarify.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Good point, thank you.
Yes, we don't want to be that nice.
We have a lot of ours to do ourselves, so once those get done, we can talk about that.
Exactly.
There's no further comment necessary, not one. Um, any further discussion on that? Seeing here none at all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, Carrie, you're one for one. Let's talk about the Union Mills Homestead Grist Mill, Mill Wheel and Shaft Replacement.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning.
Commissioners, we're here today to request your approval of a contract for the construction services of the Union Mills Homestead Grist Mill, Mill Wheel and Shaft Replacement in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to BE Hasset Mill Rights Incorporated. As you are aware, the Union Mills Homestead hosts tours for the property, I'm sorry, yes, of the property for schools, private groups, individual tours, social and historical events, as well as special celebrations. The active mill located at Union Mills Homestead produces grain products as part of the living history experience. The existing mill wheel, mill wheel gear and shaft have reached the end of its useful life and will need to be removed and replaced. The county solicited a detailed request for proposals for this very specialized service, and received only one from BE Hasset Mill Rights Incorporated, which is located in Harrods Creek, Kentucky. BE Hasset Mill Rights Incorporated has an extensive background in this type of workmanship, and has previously provided similar work for the removal and replacement of the mill flume at Union Mills in two thousand twenty-one. The county was very pleased with the work they provided. The amount we are requesting is within the adopted budget. If you don't have any questions for me, I'll turn it over to Dean, who actually worked on the mill flume project back in two thousand twenty-one with this, um, particular vendor.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Uh, we were very happy with the work that, uh, the contractor did, and, uh, we hope to, uh, move along and have him do the additional work.
What is the general lifespan of a mill wheel and shaft?
It depends if it's covered. If it has a roof over it, it'll last a lot longer. But, uh, we've been getting like twenty, twenty to twenty-five years out of the, the wheel, and that's why the flume was replaced last year, because they were both replaced at the same time.
Motion to award the contract for construction services for the Union Mills Homestead to Grist Mill, Mill Wheel and Shaft Replacement to BE Hasset Mill Rights Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. What do we do with the old mill wheel? I mean, is there value to it?
Certain pieces of it, the, the wheel and the shaft, we're going to leave out there so people can actually touch it, have it laying out there in the grass.
Yeah.
So, they can actually walk up and touch it. That keeps them away from going up to where the wheel actually is. But we're going to use part of it. The rest of it, uh, will probably be just gotten rid of.
Now, that's a good, that's a good idea, to have a static display so folks can see what a mill wheel is and actually physically touch it, you know? Okay.
Yeah, my, my, my reluctance on this one has, in no way reflects upon the work the staff has done to research this issue and find somebody who can do the right work. Just seems like an awful lot of money to me, so I am, uh, I am opposed until we can maybe discuss. That costs some more, but that's just me.
So, Commissioner, you're talking about, what, putting it back out for bid, or?
Perhaps it's unfair for me to apply this sort of ideology to just about everything that we do. But I do, and I think a lot of us, we're all, we're all principled up here. Two hundred and eighty thousand dollars is a lot of money to replace a mill, when we've got the challenges we do in the county. It's, it's just a hard pill to swallow, and I recognize the fact that the people that operate Union Mills love the place. It's rich in history, it's an important landmark in Carroll County. But, uh, it's just an awful lot of money. So, I'm having a difficult time with this one.
Is the, is the mill wheel lifespan, I mean, is it, is it done? I mean, there's no function left within this mill wheel?
It's, it's actually falling apart. We've been out there, we've been running cables in it, and, and doing a lot of work to it to keep it running. And it actually is to the point now, every now and then, it, it gets stuck because it's, it's sinking, it's, it's, it's done. If, if you keep running it, it's just going to fall completely apart.
So, you basically put enough Band-Aids on it to get it to where it is now? So, it's either keep it static only, or replace it?
And even static, it's just, it's going to fall apart.
Yeah.
How old is the current wheel?
It's around twenty-five years, I think, maybe more.
Okay.
And the sta-, excuse me, the statement that this is within budget, it's planned for, it was in the budget, it's all county taxpayer money, this isn't, because they do sometimes get grants out there to do some work, but this isn't the case this time.
No, this was county money.
Correct. And I think Commissioner Guerin has a, a valid point, when we're looking at any dollars we're spending up here, be it trucks, be it a, a mill wheel, be it whatever, is, I think we're all very cognizant and aware of that. I do think, while I agree with that point, I do think one of the challenges, obviously, is we only had one, uh, entity that was, you know, willing to put forth, you know, an option on this, and then it's a specialized field. We're not going to just go out and be able to hire somebody on an easy basis to do something like this. So, I, I do recognize your point, and, and I, I agree with you in the fact that it is significant money. I think the challenge is, is if, to Mr. Leyster's point, if we do nothing, we've already kind of extended this piece as far as we can, be it stagnant or for usage.
Yeah. Probably stretched it as long as we can.
Yeah, we have.
I mean, this, uh, this company, uh, BE Hasset Mill Rights, I mean, they have a, an issue in the market. And, you know, they take advantage of that, and I-
I would, I would say, Commissioner, that, that firm that did the flume work, um, as a result of their quality, their workmanship and materials, Maryland Historical Trust actually gave them, gave an award for that flume project. So, our confidence and trust in, in that vendor is, is very strong.
Can it give them a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar reward and apply it to this? Okay, okay, I think we've had a- Okay, I think we've had a good discussion, I appreciate the insight that you all are providing on this. I had a-
Motion and a second.
And a second. Any further discussion on this? Seeing here none at all in favor?
Aye.
Against?
No.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate your time.
Okay, let's talk about repairing a vehicle, a wheel loader, a 544K wheel loader. Gentlemen.
Morning.
Morning. I was like in harmony. Go ahead.
We practiced. The Office of Procurement, in cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management and Warehouse Operation, request your approval for the repairs of a John Deere, John Deere wheel loader in the amount of $69,911.38 to Resurrection Auto Body, to whom is a term contractor with Carroll County Government. This amount is within the fiscal year 24 approved budget, and additional funds should be necessary.
As we're all aware, rust is a major enemy for the DPW vehicles and equipment. The loaders are no exception. Here are a couple pictures of the outside of the cab. It looks pretty excessive, but believe it or not, this portion is repairable. What's not repairable is the rust that has accumulated underneath the cab. The metal has rusted from the inside out, and we do believe that, so, so what we are requesting today is actually replacement of the cab in its entirety. That includes the, the inside components and some hydraulic components, and we do believe this will extend the life of the unit by at least five years.
Okay. I mean, the way you described it, I feel like it's like the Flintstones car with Fred and Barney trying to use their feet.
Just about.
Okay. Any, go ahead.
What is the cost of this, like, the whole thing, if you were to buy it new?
Right now, it's about $230,000.
So the, what is it, $69,911.38 is gonna be a significant cost savings to us if we extend the life of this?
Correct, and, and we did consider replacing the unit, but because it only has 3,400 hours, we do, we do expect much more life out of it, so the, the repairs or the cab replacement is a more cost-effective method to keep the unit in function.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay. Any discussion?
Is there any way we can use a used mill wheel to help power this somehow?
Put on the floorboards.
Sounds like no.
Motion to approve the purchase for repair work to vehicle number 8152544K Wheel Loader Incorporated in the amount of $69,911.38.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second and a discussion on this. Seeing here none at all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about household hazardous waste events. MXI Environmental Services. Go ahead, Ryan.
The Office of Procurement, in cooperation with the Bureau of Solid Waste, requests the Board of Commissioners approval of fiscal year 24 Household Hazardous Waste Event Agreement with the Northeast, Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority. Work includes conducting two household hazardous waste collection events annually through MXI Environmental of Abington, Virginia, in the amount of $44,000. The funds are included in the approved fiscal year 24 SWEF operating budget. No additional funding will be necessary unless material volume of household hazardous waste delivered by county residents exceeds forecasted quantities.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Back in February of this year, the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority issued an invitation for bids for qualified contractors to perform household hazardous waste events for both Carroll and Frederick County. And as we've discussed in the past, this is, again, the ability to be able to use some buying power by multiple counties going in on a bid. Basically, what the bid covered was performing household hazardous waste or HHW events. Frederick and Carroll County, up to four per year for each county, just in case we decide we could do more. Ultimately, one proposal, one qualifying proposal was received, and that was from MXI Environmental Services of Abington, Virginia. MXI is very experienced, they conduct HHW events for both public and private entities throughout the eastern U.S., and based on review of their qualifications and pricing, the Authority Board executed a contract with MXI. That contract term runs through June 30th of 2026 with two potential one-year extensions at the sole discretion of the counties. The HHW event services are approved in the solid waste enterprise fund budget, as was mentioned, and again, no additional funding would be necessary unless we get outrageous participation, which is always possible, and again, the quantities are delivered beyond that.
Okay.
Cool.
Motion to approve executing a contract with Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority for the use of MXI Environmental Services LLC to conduct two household hazardous waste drop-off events annually under conditions of the Authority executed contract in the amount of $44,000.
Second.
I got a motion, all done in one breath and a second. Any discussion on this? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Guerin, in the private sector, we did use heavy weights dropped from a crane to improve compaction at the landfill. Maybe we can do that with the wheel?
See, there we go. Where are you going with this?
We can look into it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Okay, Chief, why don't you come on up, and let's talk about the approval to purchase two LifePak 15V4 monitor defibrillators.
The Office of Procurement, in cooperation with the Department of Fire and EMS, requests your approval to award the purchase of two LifePak 15V4 monitor defibrillators from Stryker Medical in the amount of $60,941.80. This purchase will be made through a Maryland state contract that was competitively bid. This amount is within the fiscal year 24 adopted budget, and no additional funds should be necessary.
Yes, and this, this is just giving us permission to make the procurement based on our previously approved grant. And then, once we get the equipment, we'll be reimbursing, or we'll be reimbursed by the state, so roughly $30,587 will be coming back to the county. So the net cost will be much less than $60,000.
Well, maybe we can apply it to a wheel or something. Same. Okay.
Motion to award the purchase of LifePak 15V4 monitor defibrillators from Stryker Medical in the amount of $60,941.80.
Second.
I have a motion, second and a discussion on this. Seeing here none at all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ryan, thanks, Chief.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, Wanda, why don't you come on up here for Open Admin.
Would you wanna do Open Admin?
Yeah.
Discussion first?
Yeah, so, that's right, why don't you just come on up for a sec? And, so, Open Admin, the one thing I want to bring up, and I think we all are in concurrence of this, and we've received information, a lot of information in news regarding the legislation that's out there with juvenile, and there's a couple of different-
Interrogation Protection Act and-
Yeah, do you, I mean, there, there's a couple of them that are out there, and we were asked for public comments. We, I won't say deferred, but well, we did, to our sheriff and state's attorney's office, who has that responsibility and authority to do the things that are necessary. We collectively agree with what they shared, and want to let them answer those tough questions, but also are very supportive of the work that they both do in their offices. And I think it would be a good measure to add on to that and reach out to our legislation, and even our governor, saying that a special session should be, is warranted in doing this, and also to address these issues, but understanding the overall importance of this, it's not the session that matters most, it's the issues that matter the most. So regardless of a special session is addressed or adhered to and conducted, which I doubt it would be, that these topics and extreme, these major concerns are addressed as the highest priority in our legislators and our General Assembly as soon as they convene. That's kind of my opening salvo, and you know that's where I was gonna go with this, but if there's any thoughts and comments, and then basically what I want to do is direct staff into packaging this together and getting all of us to-
Yeah.
-sign it, but wanna go down?
Yeah, I appreciate you broaching the subject and, and, and taking this action, requesting a special legislative session to review the state of crime in the state, in particular, those two laws that were passed by the General Assembly. We're asking them to take a larger look at that when they return to session, but we're, it's important to note, and I think Commissioner Ross team alluded to this, we are certainly not alone in our thoughts on this. In fact, one of the biggest proponents of a change of a special session is some by the name of Ivan Bates. He is the Baltimore City Attorney, and I tell, I've really come to admire this, this gentleman. Look out, he's, he's on the news all the time, so we are just echoing what every single city and county attorney to my, to my mileage has, has agreed to, that this, that we have some serious issues here, and they've got to review those laws. I wish there was more leadership to call a set special session, I don't think there is, so that leaves, as Commissioner Ross you mentioned, this, these things to be fixed, hopefully, in the General Assembly when the regular session begins, so.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm sorry, please.
I was just gonna make one quick comment. You, you sort of covered most of it there, Commissioner Guerin. I think it's definitely warranted in what we're contending with, and I think, you know, when we're looking at what law enforcement and our legal system is faced and now challenged with, it is of the utmost importance that this, this topic be reviewed and looked at again, and we may or may not see a special session, but I think the, the underlying concern is that we, we would like to see this because it is of that level of significance and importance. Couldn't agree more.
Yeah, and I think it, it ties into, Commissioner Guerin, your, some of your comments about parents and kids, this whole mindset that you're not really guilty of doing something wrong, when you're guilty of doing something wrong does not help anybody, and, and, yeah, we have to push.
Yep.
I'm, I'm totally in agreement with everything that's been said so far, and I think that, you know, the root of it too, is that, that, you know, when, when you're talking about crime, whether it's a theft or a murder or a gang shooting, whatever it is, it's no way any less a crime because of the age of the person who's committing the crime, you know, the victim does not suffer any less because the culprit is a minor. And, and so I think that, you know, as has been hinted at, I mean, we may not get anywhere with getting a special session out of this, but at least lending our voices to the discussion on behalf of the citizens that we serve is, is integral to what we do, and also to the nature of the issue at hand, and so I, I commend all of my fellow Commissioners for being willing to, to pursue this. And I'm with them.
I'm just tired and exhausted of so much of this, doesn't deter me from moving forward, you know, and this is not a partisan concern, as Commissioner Guerin alluded to.
Right.
I mean, every leader that I've come across in our jurisdictions have come, said the exact same thing. We have the confer- I'm so proud of our relationships with our state's attorney and our sheriff's department, as they say the exact same thing, just as our relationship with our legislators and Board of Education. We are doing very well in that, moving forward. So, yeah, what we'll do, and Roberta, you take the lead on this, package together the appropriate verbiage, and get it back to us for signature, and we'll move forward. Okay, is there anything else for Open Admin? Okay, Wanda, let's-
Hello, Wanda.
Hello.
Wow.
Uh-oh.
Columbus Day observance, oh my gosh. Monday, November 9th, Columbus Day observance. This world, this moving fast. Tuesday, and Wednesday, and Thursday, I will be attending a Baltimore, Maryland Council? No, Baltimore Metro Council. I'll get that straight one these days. What's called Chesapeake Connect, we're going to Minneapolis.
At least you know where you're going.
Yeah, I know where I'm going. I'll have my cane with me. And then 7:00 PM-
We're unsupervised again next Thursday?
You got Tim?
He did say supervised.
You got Tim? I just want to see his face turn red, red or red.
What happened when you were supervised today?
That's true, that's true.
I know.
Okay, and then we have the Farm Bureau Annual Banquet Meeting over at Pleasant Valley Fireman's Building. Commissioner Gordon, Kyler, and Vigliotti will be attending that evening. On Wednesday, October 11th, the Farm Museum Board Meeting, Commissioner Vigliotti will be attending that morning, and then there'll be a Joint Board of Education and Board of County Commissioners joint meeting. It's an away game, it's over at the CCPS Boardroom, and currently scheduled is Commissioner Gordon, Guerin, Kyler, and Vigliotti, I will not be participating in that. Habitat for Humanity Hammer and Ales, Hub Dog Brewing Company. Hopefully, you're doing the hammer before you're doing the ales. Commissioner Kyler will be attending that. And then there's a Board of Education meeting that evening at 5:00 PM. If anyone would like to take that on, just, I think, let Wanda know.
I know that I will not be able to, to do that, that evening.
I'm not around, so, so, somebody would like to. There's a Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting with Anuban Basu over at Morn's of Westminster. Really? I thought Morn's closed.
I understand they're supposed to, but not yet.
Oh, okay. Interesting. Currently, Commissioner Gordon and Kyler are attending.
It'd be a really short meeting if it is closed.
Yeah. Commissioner Gordon and Kyler attending, if the others have not attended before, Anuban Basu is a, an entertainer along with economist, rolled up in one, and, you know, usually has good attendance at this event. That morning, after that, we starting the open session a little bit later because of that Chamber of Commerce meeting. In open, what do we have? Okay. A grant approval to apply for the annual year 24 courthouse security items funding announcement and accept the award, and Judge Hecker will be attending. Another, it'll be a public hearing and grant approval to submit application and acceptance of the CDBG or the Community Development Block Grant Recovery Support Housing Round Two regarding the Westminster Rescue Mission. Transfer of funds regarding the capital, capital transfer of funds for the Farm Museum, and then we will use those funds, if they are adequately transferred, for Carroll County Farm Museum Maintenance Building interior filled out. On Friday, October 13th, there's a open house at the Tracy Building, which is the expansion of Ridge Engineering, and then Saturday, and Commissioner Kyler and Vigliotti are attending that. On Saturday, October 14th, there's a walk in the park over at Leister Park, Commissioner Kyler will be attending, and I have the podcast that following day. On October 16th, there's a Carroll Community College Foundation Scholarship Luncheon. Commissioner Gordon and Kyler will be attending. Okay, then there's a Greater Baltimore Committee Connecting Transportation Economics Summit. Ugh, I'll be attending that. That was a ur of happiness.
I was gonna say, you sound thrilled about that.
That was a ur of happiness. Then Commissioner Guerin has a Chamber of Commerce breakfast over at the Mount Airy Senior Center Tuesday morning at 8:00 AM. There's a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at 9:00 AM, Commissioner Gordon will be attending. Commissioner Gordon and Kyler will be attending the Veterans Advisory Meeting at 2:00 PM that afternoon, and then there's Ag Center Board Meeting at 7:00 PM, I'll be participating in. On Wednesday, there is a MAKO, Maryland Association Counties Interim Legislative Committee Meeting, which will be virtual, Commissioner Kyler and I will be participating in. The Carroll Community College Board of Trustees Meeting, Commissioner Kyler and Vigliotti will be attending.
I think I'm just attending that, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, the Emergency Services- And then at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, the Emergency Services Advisory Council ESAC Meeting, Commissioner Garen will be attending that. On Thursday, it is the Carroll County Department of Social Services Open House in Westminster. Is anybody attending this or?
So far, no, it looks like.
Okay.
I'll check my schedule.
And you see, on October 19th, there is no open session. On Friday, October 20th, nothing scheduled. Saturday, October 21st, is the Ford Meat Alliance Foundation Stars and Service Gala, I'll be attending that at 7:00 PM. And then also at 7:00 PM, the 149th Maryland State Grange Awards Banquet. Don't know if anybody's attending that or not. Commissioner Vigliotti has the podcast the next day and then the 240th Anniversary Stone Chapel United Methodist Church. Commissioner Gordon and Kyler will be participating or attending at 2:00 PM.
Ms. Hill, could you add me to that, please?
I was just gonna say, could you add me to that as well, please? Thank you.
Okay.
We need to add the credit rating trip.
Yeah.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, that would be.
Yeah, there's a credit rating on.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Yep, 18 through.
And Commissioners.
Which is why I'm not, what, he's subbing from the trustees.
I'll try to grow a big mustache by then.
So, Commissioner Kyler and I will be attending the credit rating in New York City those three days. I need a, was that everything?
Yeah.
I need a motion to recess and go into closed?
So moved.
Or land acquisition.
Land acquisition.
So moved.
Go into close for land acquisition.
Motion going to close for land acquisition.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do I say a motion to adjourn after that?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn after that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.